Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, May 4th Public Session of the Halton District School Board, and may the fourth be with you. I'd like to welcome everyone, and I'd like you to ask if you have anything that makes noise, your phone or your computer, if you could mute it or turn it off, it'd be appreciated. I would like to welcome all members in our audience, including former student trustee, Jason Earl.
Where's he?
Right over there. He's hiding.
I did? He was only a little kid last time I checked.
Yes, somebody hasn't muted their phone. I would also like to remind everyone, we are being video voice recorded and broadcast on the web. So, the first item is approval of the agenda. Can I have movers for approval of the current agenda? Trustee Gray, seconded by -- oh, sorry. We have to amend the agenda for, we do have a CAC presentation. So, under Presentations, item 2.2, we have a presentation. So, movers for the amended agenda, trustees Gray and Reynolds. So, all those in favor. Just a minute. Get past all that. All those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. I'd like to notice, note regrets from trustee Schneider and Sahai. Okay. We're not sure about trustee Sahai. And everyone else is present. So, we are now up to any declarations of possible conflict of interest. Do we have any possible conflicts of interest tonight? Seeing? I did vote. Maybe I have to log out and log in again? I don't know. Okay, I'm gonna log out and log in again. Well, I'm not ending the meeting, I'm just logging off. And I'm gonna log in again. See what happens. The meeting should still be running. Thank you, I did vote affirmatively. Technology is wonderful, except when it doesn't work. Okay, hopefully I'm in now. Still only says 10, but we'll see when I vote what happens. Okay, so, we have no delegations, but we do have a presentation tonight. And I'd like to welcome Denise Nasset up to the podium for our presentation on CAC. And if you would like to introduce your partners.
You'll need the mic on, Denise. Thanks. Just give me one second. So, with me, I have Diane Vandembach, she is from Learning Disabilities Association of Halton, and Tammy Beatty, who is the alternate on the Learning Disabilities Association of Halton. So, they are here as well to give you our voice, I guess is the best way to put it. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and present CAC's voice today. We are very lucky, as you can see, we have a lot of knowledge and experience around the CAC tables. We're represented, we represent a wide range of students, and we're very passionate in our advocacy. One of our members stated just last night, actually, that we're not having discussions for the fun of it, we're not volunteering our time to have interesting talks, we have a job to do. That job is to ensure that our most vulnerable students don't fall through the cracks and get the services and support that they need. I would like to thank the trustees who sit on CAC every month and listen to us and contribute and hear our concerns. I'd also like to thank trustee Oliver and Gray, who have been attending our meetings for the past few months for their interest and for learning more about our concerns. It really does increase that collaboration when we know that we're being heard at the CAC table. So, I just want to start, during the First Budget Workshop, I asked a question, if we knew how many students were on an IEP. Well, superintendent Zonafeld was very good and able to get the numbers for me. So, as you can see, we have just over 63,000 students in the school board. 10,586 of them are on an IEP or have an IEP, which represents 16.7%. That's a very large percentage of students who are getting help. This does not represent those children who might be getting informal help in other ways, but are not on an IEP. So, that percentage is probably even higher when you look at the children who need a little bit extra support to get through their school years. The range of these needs are very broad. It can be that child who needs an accommodation in phys ed because they have arthritis, it could be that child who gets classroom withdrawal because they're struggling through language or through math, or it could be that child who's in life skills or in a center program who needs that constant support, those students who are nonverbal, maybe in wheelchairs and just need that extra support. These needs for these students are as varied as the students themselves. So, we often say in the community, when you meet one child, you've met one child. Every one of them has a different need, every one of them has a different requirement, and that's how we look at it. I think it's really important to point out, this is the mission of the Student Services, and I love this mission because it really says that we're here to meet the needs of every student. And I think it's important to point out that these services and supports are needs and not wants. It's a very distinct difference. I may want my child to learn French, but I absolutely need describing support that my child gets because that's how they tell their teacher that they've learned. The supports a child with special needs require, the supports the child needs are not nice-to-haves. They are absolutely required for the child to learn, and equally important to maintain dignity and inclusion in the school environment. We're not just educating these students, but we need to make sure they leave our system with pride, confidence, and the skills to be successful. In 2012, the Supreme Court of Canada handed out a decision in Moore versus B.C., some of you may or may not be familiar with it, that stated adequate special education is not a dispensable luxury. It is the means by which students get meaningful access to general education available to all students. The Moore case was about a young boy who was diagnosed with a severe learning disability, and the school board told him that due to provincial funding, he would have to go to a private school at the expense of his parents to get the supports he needed. Many years of court battles, and the Supreme Court came down and said what I just said, this was not acceptable, that there was discrimination in play, and the parents were then awarded the cost of his tuition, half the cost of his transportation, and damages. To me, this is a cautionary tale for all provinces and boards, because if we start to remove vital services from children, you run the risk of this exact thing happening. So, the message that CAC wants to give you is very simple. We cannot support the proposed cuts without knowing the full picture. We fully understand that funding is being cut, we are not naive, we get it. We get it that there is a cut that's coming down, but we need to make sure and we're ready to work in a collaborative way to make sure that the needs of the students are put first. We are missing information that would help us to understand the impacts of these cuts. For example, the data on the success or the lack of success of certain programs. If we're going to cut the learning centers, for example, what does the plan look like to replace it? What are we going to do to make sure that our students get those services? Parents have been contacting us to advocate for the continuation of the learning center, I'm sure some of you have received some of those advocations, but I want to quote one because it really stands out to say what these mean. Because of this learning center program, my son is now able to communicate effectively in class via his computer. He has improved social skills, conflict resolution skills, now keeps his desk and his schoolwork organized. He uses effective learning strategies to help him understand specific school concepts taught in class, and also utilizes his self-advising skills in class to become an independent and successful HDSB learner. He's a very different student than the one who started in the program six weeks prior. He is more autonomous and a creative problem solver. He is less anxious about being at school and more interested in learning. He raises his hand with confidence to ask questions for clarification in class. He now understands that learning is a process, and everyone learns at different speeds and through different modalities. He says, "Mom, I really like going to school now, I feel good about going to school." That's just after six weeks in a learning center. There are many parents that could give you this story. Our impact that these programs have goes beyond the learning. It goes to their self-esteem, it goes to their self-confidence and reduce behavioral issues. How can we justify eliminating a program that has such a great impact on our most vulnerable students, especially since we don't have a full understanding of what will replace it? Perhaps a phased approach to elimination could help us build capacity growth in our classroom teachers without losing the service. We need to think outside the box. This process of completely eliminating something goes against every principle of change management. And I know, we don't necessarily look at change management the same in a school board as we do in a business environment, but you have to look at the principles and realize that it goes against everyone that we preach. We would like to see an intensive review of the special education programs. We are making changes to these programs without understanding the full impact of these changes. Perhaps there's programs that are not working right now that we could reduce, and that would allow us to fund the programs that are working very well. Many of us around the CAC table are parents. To children with special education needs, we have experienced both the triumphs and the failures of the system. We're often told that we have to be our child's advocate. I would be very rich if I had a dollar for every time I've been told I have to be my child's advocate. Because who else is gonna do it for them? We believe that's your job as trustee. You are the voice of all children, not just the ones that conform to the defined norm. We are asking you to step up, to listen to our parents, listen to our children, and make sure that we're giving them the skills and the abilities to be productive and happy. Make sure we're making the cuts that will keep our children in school and learning and not making cuts just because it's inconvenient. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have any, we have about two minutes left, do you have any comments or questions for speeches? Trustee Daniele.
Well, and it's a presentation, isn't it, by the delegations?
Oh, that's true.
It's not. With your indulgence, first a comment, then a question. I've been where you are, I chaired CAC for two years and sat on it for four years in my first term, and it's not an easy job. And in fact, I can tell you that last night, I met somebody who was in the gallery for the very first time, it was her first CAC meeting, and she caught me today, and she spoke at length of the dedication, experience, knowledge, and advocacy that she saw around that table last night, and she was absolutely awestruck by every one of you. So, I wanted to make sure that I pass that along, because I know you give up a great deal of your own personal time to be here to advise us on special education matters. And I want you to know that it matters a great deal to us, and it does make a difference. So, thank you. Thank you. That was my comment. My question, we had this forwarded to us last night, it's my understanding that CAC made a motion, speaking to your last slide, about a full review of special education programs and services by a qualified outside consultant. And I've got the piece of paper there, but I want to, because obviously there was a great deal of discussion around that, if you could just, because I wasn't able to be there last night, can you give me the Reader's Digest version of, I understand from the way you spoke, why you're looking for the review, but why in particular an outside consultant, and any suggestions you would have along those lines?
Absolutely. So, you actually hit my area of expertise, I am a continuous improvement consultant. It's what I've been doing for 20 years, is finding waste in systems. And the reason that we say an outside consultant, because you guys know your business, I'm not here to tell you your business, but you also know it with blinders on. You see it every day, you're used to what you see, you're used to the way things work. So, when I come in as an external person, and I look at a process, I'm gonna ask you why. Why do you do it that way? And I'm gonna ask you that five times. And the reason I'm gonna ask you that five times is because by the fifth time, we're gonna get to the root of why you really do it. Nine times out of 10, the first answer is, because we've always done it that way. And I'm telling you this with 20 years' experience. And so, what we're saying is, we need someone outside of the processes to look at the process. Does it need to be an outside consultant? I don't know. To be perfectly honest, at the CAC table, we talked about the fact there's many of us around the table with the expertise to help you do this. And we are willing to give of our time freely to do this, if it means that we get a review and we can actually see some improvement and potentially save the board money. My biggest project, I saved $80 million a quarter for a company. So, there's, I'm not saying that there's that much waste, because I know there isn't. But even a little bit gets us a little bit more money that goes directly to the students. That's why we're asking for it to be an outside person.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would like to, oh, she came on last second. Trustee Collard.
Yeah, I just wanted to let trustees know that I will be bringing forward the notice of motion from CAC last night, and it was passed unanimously from CAC.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, I would like to thank you very much for coming out tonight, Denise, to share your presentation, and thank Diane and Tammy as well for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, so, we're on to our next item, which? So, we're now up to our minutes of the regular board meeting from April the 20th, 2016. Do I have any movers? Trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Gray. Do we, is there any comments or questions on the minutes from April 20th? Seeing none. Trustee Oliver.
Point of order, I was, I had sent regrets, I was not at the meeting, do I still get to?
Yes, you still.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. So, we're now up to business transacted in private session. Was there anything from private session tonight?
Yes, I have two items. The first is, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolutions from the Halton District School Board Meeting in Private Session, May 4th, 2016, relating to property matters. Report 16076, and I so move.
Thank you, and I am going to, I'm going to second it. So, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you. And you have a second item?
Yes. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolutions from the Halton District School Board Meeting in Private Session, May 4th, 2016, relating to negotiations. Report 16075, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or trustee Collard? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Trustee Reynolds. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Did you have any other items? Thank you. So, then we'll move on to our order papers. Is there any comments or questions on our order paper tonight? Seeing none, we're moving right along. We will come up to our first action item, which is the Long Term Accommodation Plan. Superintendent Verren and Mr. Ranzella reports 16078 and 16079 revised. Welcome, Mr. Ranzella and Superintendent Verren. It's on page 10 of your board package. When you're ready.
Thank you. Before this evening is the revised LTAP board report, but ancillary to it is Board Report 16078, which is the results from the input, a public input on the LTAP. I'm not gonna go through it in detail, the points are identified here. I just wanted to reflect that we had a substantial increase in hits on our LTAP page we have compared to last year. We had 1,100 hits last year, this year we had 20, almost 2,500 hits. And we also had, saw an increase in terms of number of comments from 104 last year to 173. So, our ability to get the message out for feedback has proved successful this year, and we hope to, again, increase it moving forward. The report, again, outlines some of the comments, questions that have been presented. Many of these will be addressed in the context of, well, not many, some will be, in terms of the closing the gap initiative, as well as the current program viability review that's underway. And in terms of existing accommodation in some of the schools that have been expressed, will continue to be monitored. Of course, the results of the PVC may impact on a lot of what may be moving forward. And as outlined in the report, this provides a basis for us submitting capital priorities moving forward. Hopefully, we'll hear some announcements or requests for information by the end of May, hopefully, and, again, this is just rumor and conjecture from that end. So, again, the report is there in terms of the input. In terms of the actual board report, it's been revised to reflect comments from the first meeting in April that, when it was presented. And we also, trustees received revised pages for their LTAP reflecting those changes. So, I think that's basically it, I'd be glad to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to put the motion, the first motion on the floor, and then we can have discussions around the public feedback, and then we'll move on to the actual LTAP plan. So, the first motion is, this, just a minute, there is no motion with, there is no motion, never mind. I thought, because it had a separate report number, so it's just for information. Okay. So, then we'll move on to the actual motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the 2015-2016 Long Term Accommodation Plan, or LTAP, and that staff be directed to submit the updated LTAP to the Ministry of Education, and further, that all that, then all entities identified on community planning partnerships notification be advised that the LTAP has been approved, and direct them to the board's website to review the electronic document. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Oliver. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is with respect to the public comments. There is a significant number of them related to the condition of some of our older facilities, related to closing the gap. So, I just wonder about, what is the, what is the timing of the closing the gap initiative for this year? Because I think it would be helpful for people to know and understand kind of how that ties in. Thanks.
I defer to superintendent Cullen on this question.
Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you. Through the chair to trustee L. Harrison. The close the gap is really site-specific, so each school that had been identified might have a series of things being done to it, so they're not all at once, so there's no real one date, one answer. But the sequence of events is typically, the electrical upgrades are, the bulk of them are scheduled for this summer, some of the air conditioning items that were identified would then follow, some of them being done together. I would say for the most part, and we do have a schedule, so we could share that with you, so that you would know which sites are getting which of the components at which dates. But I would say for the most part, a lot of the electrical upgrades are first, followed by the actual hardware related to a lot of the air conditioning and ventilation upgrades.
What?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So, maybe it would be helpful, and I'm not sure if I missed it, might be in there, just to put a tie-in back to that report in some way. I am aware of this schedule, it's been reported a number of times, and I've committed particularly the Southwest Oakville projects that are going ahead in their timeline. But, so, are there, there's no additional initiatives then anticipated until that kind of long list has been accomplished?
Again, through the chair to trustee L. Harrison. We are actually contemplating expanding the list, and whether or not those items would occur concurrently with some of the previously approved components, or whether they would follow. And it is as a result of another potential school site sale that would then contribute to the available funding. So, we are looking at potentially expanding the list, but we bring a report back to the board on those recommendations, and I think we've actually scheduled to do that at either the next meeting or before the end of the school year, anyway, on the extended part of the list. Okay?
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the LTAP? Seeing none. Then, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. And thank everyone involved for the document and the revised changes. I think from a lot of the comments that we saw, especially the ones included from the municipality, that everybody thinks it's a much better, more understandable document and easier to follow. And so, thank you very much to everyone involved for all your hard work. So, we are now up to the student trustee reports, but unfortunately, they're not here tonight. Does anyone want to share some of the news from the election? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. These student trustee elections were held at the last meeting, and it's always exciting when you see so many young people speak, and also to see a roomful of young people, not just the student senators that have been coming, a number that came up to me and said, "I've come specifically to vote, how do I do that?" So, to see that engagement was phenomenal. There were nine candidates, and I have to tell you that I am really glad that I did not have to vote, because it would have been a tough decision. There were nine exceptional speeches made that night. But there are two young people, Dashah and Zaid, I don't have their last names. Do you have the information about what schools they're from, Julie?
Oh, the director. They are from Abbey Park and White Oaks. Okay, so Dashah's from White Oaks, and Zaid is from Abbey Park, and they were absolutely phenomenal. And they're gonna keep us on our toes next year. They've got a lot of plans, a lot of initiative, and they're gonna be a fantastic addition to this table, although I have to say from the bottom of my heart how much we will miss Sophie and Jovan as they go on to the next stage of their lives.
Director Miller.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I don't know Zaid, but Dashah's name has been around this table several times, she's been a speaker at Hayek breakfasts twice, she was on a panel, and she is also the young lady that I brought information about in terms of debating. She was in the World Debating Championships, and she just came back from Oxford with the White Oaks team, so I think she's gonna give somebody a run for their money. I don't know whether it's the trustees or the staff, but somebody's getting a run for her money.
I think it's the director.
And Zaid is a pretty remarkable young man as well, so.
Well, I think we all echo trustee Daniele's sentiments around trustee Schneider and Sahai, but we'll have an opportunity to celebrate them later. And congratulations to Dashah and Zaid on being elected, and we look forward to them joining us next year. Is there anything else regarding the student trustee reports? I know they're, when is their conference? It's next week? Thursday? Next Thursday at Sheridan, all day, right? 9 to 3 or so? Nine to three or something? So anybody who can should try and drop in. So I think that, oh, trustee L. Harrison.
Thanks very much. So I understand that it was an amazing event and that the speakers were quite excellent. And also I offer congratulations to our outgoing and our incoming student trustees. And trustee Daniele, you made a comment about, you know, not only were students in the room to, to run as candidates, but a number of students also came a distance to vote. And my understanding is for as many students that made it to the building to vote, there were as many, if not more, who were tied up with conflicts of some sort that were very interested in also participating in the voting process. So it's my hope that as we move forward, that perhaps there can be, that process can be revisited in the spirit of inclusiveness. We have such a great, huge geography and one location here, sort of in the middle. Thanks.
Director Miller.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee L. Harrison and all trustees. We've already started that review process. Dale and I met with, and Dale and I met with Jovan and Sophie prior to this one, and we identified some issues that, that as some of you may have heard, came, actually did come up. But it was too late in the game to fix those, so we replicated the process from last year, which was an appropriate process, but it's not appropriate going forward. So we are reviewing the process, looking at kids voting from a distance, voting online. There's a, all sorts of, oh, and someone from Superintendent Trufant's department, Jamie Sinclair, joined us for that meeting as well to help us with the technology. So we're hoping that we'll have a, a fully up-to-date process for trustees to look at well prior to the elections next year, and that the, some of the challenges for voting this year will not be replicated again, so.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions around the student trustee report? They'll be happy to know they had a report, won't they? Seeing none? We're now up to notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion tonight? Trustee Collard.
Yes, I'm pleased to bring this notice of motion on behalf of SEAC, and I will forward full text of the motion. SEAC recommends to the Board of Trustees that a full review of special education programs and services in the Halton District School Board be done by a qualified outside consultant to look at best practices in delivering programs and services to students and special education needs within the Halton District School Board, and that this review include consultation with all stakeholders within the HDSB, including but not limited to teachers, certs, SLP, SpecEd, CYC, social workers, certs, trustees, SEAC, student services, parents, students, and there was another group, but it's, I don't have it on here, but I will have it in the final text. And that this review be started as soon as possible and in any event in the fall of 2016, to be finalized by March 2017 for consideration during the budget process, as well as prior to SEAC making any recommendation to the Board of Trustees on the 2017-18 Special Education Plan. And trustee Pappin and I will produce a report for the board package in two weeks.
Thank you. Are there any other notices of motion tonight? Seeing none? We'll move along to our action items for the May 18th board meeting. So the first motion is motion to rescind M110216. Trustee Collard, report 16072 on page 25 of your board package. Trustee Collard.
I'm actually going to defer to Director Miller to speak to this.
Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos and trustee Collard. At the present time, it may not be necessary to even look at this particular motion, as it appears that after the conversations with SEAC last night, the SpecEd plan will be in place. As many of you know, there's an awkwardness to the way this is happening. Last year, we had some real challenges. The SpecEd plan was the night before we came to budget. Included in this is the operational plan. Now, having said that, I completely understand and appreciate the sentiment and the reasons why SEAC and trustees would want SpecEd plan and operational goals, or operational plan for that matter, prior to budget, because the budget should reflect what's in, in those things. So I, we fully appreciate that and understand that. I think the issue for us is, it's kind of cumbersome with it being a motion, and it's, it's incomplete in terms of telling all the machinations that go into budget and all that, and it seems a little simple. So what, what I would propose is that the motion to rescind, I'm not sure of the language, but withdrawn for the time being, it can come back. And we will look at an admin procedure that will be all-encompassing around operational plan, budget, SpecEd plan, SpecEd plan, and an accompanying critical path around those things that would both be transparent for public digestion and for trustee digestion. And that way, an admin procedure has more details, is more fulsome, and there's a greater understanding of the processes that need to be involved. So that, that's the proposal. As I said, the intent is not to circumvent the process around SpecEd prior to budget or any of that, SpecEd plan prior to budget. It's to, if we're going to do it, I believe, if we're going to do that, and I think we should do that, let's do it right. And I think an admin procedure and a critical path is the most appropriate way to do that. And I don't know when that would be ready, because our initial stages would be to explore it, see what has to go into it. And as I said a few minutes ago, for trustees and the public, the admin procedure would be public, and there would be a lot more information there than a simple motion that says this has to be done before there. So I think there'd be, bring greater understanding to the process, and hopefully decrease some of the, the anxiety that occurs around this time of year. As we all know, in the life of a, of a school board, this time of year is brutal, because we're trying to put everything in all at once in our plans for the following year. And if we start, we do critical paths with our staffing, and we do critical paths with other areas. So anyway, I'm open for questions, suggestions, but that's where we are.
Thank you, Director Miller. It is my intent to withdraw these motions this evening, because if he, if Director Miller is going to produce the administrative procedures, then it would be appropriate to keep these in place until the administrative procedure is in place. So I'm going to withdraw them until such time as we have an administrative procedure. And I do appreciate your work on this.
So you'll be withdrawing both 4.22 and 4.23?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to the director. I'm pleased with this recommendation, and I do support that. I, I'm appreciative of the logistics that led to the formation of the, the motion that trustee Collard was going to put forward. But having attended the SEAC meeting and, and heard the sentiments and the concerns shared there, I appreciate that side as well. And so I, I do believe there, there is another approach that needs to be taken. And so the director's recommendation to look at an administrative procedure instead makes a lot of sense to me from that side, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Although I haven't been able to attend the SEAC meetings in person yet, I have been following along very closely. I also agree that the admin procedure is the way to go. I will respectfully submit that we put a framework policy on top of it, because the original motion was a motion of the Board of Trustees requesting information in a certain timeline. And I'm not suggesting that one would be very large. It would just be, you know, the objective, because the trustees value the timeline or something along those lines, we've directed the director to, you know, follow the admin procedure or something, something very simple, just so that it is coming, it is very clear that in lieu of the motion, the trustees have said, rather than the motion on our order paper, we want continuity or consistency, or whatever the word is. And the admin procedure would then have all of the detail that you mentioned, just so that it is very clear that it's there to stay. And, and once the admin procedure has been presented, it would be board policy to follow those kinds of timelines.
Director.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I just want to comment on that. Thanks for that. I, I do think that this would be easier for SEAC as well, as they could follow along with milestones along a critical path and so on. I think it would be supportive of their process. And now I forgot what I was going to say. Oh, we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. Anyway, thanks.
Okay. Any other speakers on the motion to rescind around the SpecEd plan? Okay, so now we're going to the motion to rescind M110213, which is guarding the operating plan. Report 16073. Trustee Collard.
As I stated, I will be withdrawing this one as well, but I, I will defer to the director.
Director Miller.
Thank you, trustee Collard and Chair Amos. This one is a little more awkward in terms of withdrawing at this, or not withdrawing it at this point. So I'm looking for the trustees around direction, because in order to develop the operational plan, we need the strategic multi-year plan. I suspect that the multi-year plan will not be coming to the board until, well, I don't suspect. It will not be coming to the board until June, at which it would be virtually impossible for us to do, well, the timing just doesn't work. We have to do an operational plan prior to budget. I think the budget and the multi-year plan will be in around the same time, if not the same time. So for us to develop an operational plan will be pretty difficult to do. My, my plan would be that if we had the multi-year plan, because that's what should lead to our operational plan, is that the multi-year plan is, is accepted, and then we would develop an operational plan over the summer, and then either the first or second board meeting in September, we would present our operational plan for 2016-17. The challenge here is, I guess, it would be also part of my plan to include the operational plan in the, in the admin procedure that I was talking about spec, around the SpecEd report. And that admin procedure, we wouldn't make it too big, because we have so many processes here, but we would limit it to those key ones that we plan for the following year. SpecEd plan, operational plan, probably being the only two, but there may be one or two others that we'd have to look at as well. But off the top of my head, that's one or two. So I'm looking actually for trustee, two trustees around direction for this one that will allow us to develop our operational plan following the acceptance of the multi-year plan, knowing that it may be after the budget is passed or in around the same time. So I'll leave it for trustees to kind of figure it out.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
On this side, I think we all recognize that it's been a different year in terms of the number of hirings and, and who we've hired, and the, the large consultation process that we've undertaken in developing the multi-year plan. So my, my first thought is, given all of that, I think what the director's speaking of is, makes sense, and makes sense for, for this year. And in, in wishing to keep that, that motion in place, I wonder if we couldn't entertain just a waving of that, that item for this year and this year alone. And then it, it still stays on the, on the books, so, so to speak, until such time as a procedure is, is developed. So that's, that's my first, first thought.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
The procedural terminology for that is to suspend the motion. And so I would recommend that we, instead of rescind the motion, that perhaps it could be reworked for next week to say suspend, which would leave it there, would not have the director not doing what he was told in, in the, in the order paper, and therefore everybody would stay onside, and we would maintain it on the order paper in that it would be suspended for one year. So I respectfully submit that perhaps trustee Collard could rework it to take up the word rescind and put suspend in, and everybody would be happy, and we would get our framework policy and our admin procedure, and everything would work. The operational plan, I was trying to find it on the website. It's not hard to find, it's not easy to find, and I couldn't even Google it. So I can't even quite remember. The operational plan, in effect, is we are continuing to run our schools the way we have run our schools. It's not like the schools are going to come to a screeching halt on September 7th or 8th, when they, you know, because we don't have an operational plan passed, everything still goes according to plan. It's just that we wouldn't have our goals for specific information, the extra pieces. Perhaps the director could elaborate on what we use the operational plan for going forward.
Director Miller.
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope and all trustees. The operational plan is, is essentially informs our board improvement plan for student achievement. And the board improvement plan for student achievement informs all school improvement plans for student achievement. So what we develop in the operational plan, elements of it appear in our BIPSA, and elements of the BIPSA appear in the SIPSA. It will put the schools a wee bit behind the eight ball, because some of them start the work in, in August, when they get their staffs back together, or certainly their admin teams back together, that they won't have an operational plan to be looking at. And if you'll recall, at previous leadership conferences in August, we quite often present the operational plan. Will be my intention that we would hopefully be at a stage where we could present our operational plan, but it would have to be in draft form, because it would have not been to the, the Board of Trustees at, at that time. So again, there's some awkwardness around that. But failing that, I have every confidence that our schools would be up and running and would continue to use this year's operating plan until the new one was in place, and they would. Ideally, the SIPSA's, the SIPSA's that schools have are, are organic dynamic documents that should change, not monthly, but on a regular basis to reflect what's going on in the schools, because principals and vice principals or admin and school staffs should be reflecting on the practice of what's working, what's not working, et cetera, and so on, and adjusting their SIPSA's accordingly. So I'm less concerned about that because of the nature of the SIPSA's. So the plan would be to carry on using this year's operational plan, and hopefully have some kind of draft that we could present at the leadership. If not, I'm wary of presenting a draft when it hasn't been to the Board of Trustees yet, even in draft, but we can have those conversations over the summer, so.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I support suspending this, this motion for the time being to, to meet the demands. But this will be an issue again in a few years when we are looking at a new multi-year plan. So am I to understand that you will be looking at an admin procedure to address that particular process?
Through your chair, Amos, to trustee Oliver. You know, I hadn't thought about including the multi-year plan in the admin procedure, because it's, it's four years out, but you're, you're right. It probably should be included in there, and that gives us a timeline. As, as Vice Chair Graves said, this year was a little awkward with me being appointed in October, and then had to hire several senior admin, and, and some of our labor challenges that we had this year, this was an extraordinary year. And we'll have other extraordinary years going forward as well, as we know. But I, I hadn't thought about that, but I think we, you've given me food for thought, and we should take a look at that. Failing putting in an admin procedure, maybe we start looking at a planning process so that we don't find ourselves in this predicament again.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Yes, I was just going to say, I don't think it will necessarily be an issue four years out, depending on Director Miller's retirement timelines and so on. Yeah, I do think that this, this really was just, just a one-off. However, I do think it's a great idea to have, to have something in writing as well. It never hurts. It's great.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're now up to then the, uh, community-based facility enhancements policy. Director Miller, report 16072 on page 27 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you Chair Amos. Trustees all have this in front of them and as you can see, there were no comments to, uh, or this draft policy generated no comments, so.
Okay, is there any questions on, uh, this policy which will be coming back in two weeks? Seeing none? We'll, we'll move on to the Code of Ethics Draft Policy. Uh, trustees Collard and Graves, report 16083 on page 30 of your board package. Uh, trustee Harvey Hope, which one are you wanting to speak to? Well, I just moved, did you want to speak to the community basis? So you want to speak to the next one? Okay. Just so I was, just so I was clear, I had, but I, in case I'd missed you. Vice Chair Graves.
This came to, uh, to Committee of the Hall. So I, we had a, a healthy discussion on it there. And, uh, Executive Officer McFadden would probably be the, the best person to direct questions to.
Comments or questions on this policy which will be coming back in two weeks? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Uh, yes, I'm in the process of sending, I hope, I'm not too sure if attachment got there or not. There is a revised version, um, that has been reformatted after it hit your package and is a living document. So I, I'm withdrawing in advance my comments that the format is not the right format. But it will be posted if we pass it and we, we, um, agree to vote on it, uh, it will be in the format, the corrected format, not the one in the package.
Thank you. Um, Executive Officer McFadden?
Yes, um, thank you to trustee Anne Harvey Hope for the, um, the corrections to the format. You may recall at Committee of the Hall that, uh, that was, uh, mentioned and it's, it's no content changes. It's changes to the subheadings and the addition of legal references citing the, um, Ontario Human Rights Code, the Education Act, the broader public sector accountability act, and the broader public sector procurement directive. Um, and a reference is also is made to the administrative procedure on Code of Ethics. So there are no changes to the substantive document above.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions around this tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much. Executive Officer McFadden? Okay, so we're now moving along to our information items. Uh, changes in Spec Ed programming, Superintendent Zonifeld, report 16080 on page 32 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Zonifeld. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening through the Chair, trustees. Uh, before you have a report regarding, uh, this change in, in, uh, special education programs, where we are discontinuing the early language development centers and, uh, supporting these students in their home schools. Uh, some of those ways that they'll happen, it's been outlined in the report. And the opening of three new communication, uh, classes to meet the needs of a growing, uh, number of students in, uh, in need of that service. So the report's before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding, uh, the changes in Spec Ed programs? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Um, I was a little bit surprised, um, that this didn't come as a motion. It comes as an information item. And I understand that's because there are no budgetary implications. Can you please explain, um, how, how the budget balances itself on this one? And, um, perhaps trustees could understand a bit better why this didn't come as a motion?
Sure. Uh, this is a, um, internal realignment of resources, uh, to meet the needs of students. So each of these classes are staffed with a, uh, elementary teacher. And they get a portion of a speech-language pathologist's time. One day, uh, I think most of them, they get one day a week. Once again, it depends on the student needs, but that's approximately how it's, how it's apportioned. And then the communication classes also have, uh, an EA as part of that support as well. And that resource will draw from within our internal pool. So it's really a, uh, an, um, a net zero in terms of the resource to support these. So the, um, this is really as a, as a courtesy to trustees to, so that they're aware of this, this change we're doing to meet the needs of, needs of students.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, trustee L Harrison. Oh. Trustee Gray.
Thank you through the Chair. Just wondered, uh, if it's known yet where the three new communication classes might be placed?
Uh, we've been working with, uh, principals and department staff on that. And I think where we've landed is, uh, we've identified the needs as being in Burlington, Oakville, and Milton. So the classes, I believe, will be at JM Denier's, uh, CH Norton, and Abbey Lane.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Through you Madam Chair. I'm not quite sure how to ask her if this is a question, but. So, uh, on the page two of the report, it says these program changes were discussed at a recent CAC meeting and members had the opportunity to provide feedback. And while I'm not, uh, able to attend most of the CAC meetings, I do read all of the, uh, meeting notes, um, very attentively to try and keep up to all of the, the conversations that go on. But the notes aren't sometimes sufficiently detailed for me to get a sense of what the feedback may have been. So my question is just what wisdom or guidance was offered at that, with respect to this? Recognizing that they are experts also on what's going on, um, in the community.
Sure. Through the, through the Chair, to trustee L Harrison, the, the discussion at CAC. Uh, you know, I came asking, uh, their advice around this and the feedback was, um, certainly had questions of, of clarification. But they asked, um, how we would be supporting the students that would no longer be attending the ELDC program. And, uh, saw the value in, in those students remaining at their home schools and being supported there. And, uh, recognition of the needs of the students entering into the communication, uh, classes. Knowing that those are some very high needs that we have there and, and the, um, sort of looking at whose, whose needs can we most easily serve in the, in the, in a regular class? That's certain the students in the early language development program. So, um, there was, uh, I guess the, the comments around the table sort of echoed, uh, what I was sharing and why, the rationale behind that. And, um, uh, in recognition of the high needs of the students in the communication program.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, uh, very helpful. So my request, and I'm not sure if it's doable, but when information like this comes forward, it would be helpful for me to understand, I guess, at a high level, it would be referenced back to the CAC minutes or, you know, what concerns or issues were raised and how, how we managed them. Or if, if we could, you know, in all cases, I know it's not possible. But, um, I think it's, um, really good to, again, listen and hear, hear the wisdom that's offered to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I keep walking right into the stereotype you guys all have of me, but anyway, um, my question is, uh, is, uh, around the net zero and, um, with all due respect, perhaps, um, when, when, because this is a, the budget of the board is, is owned by the trustees. And, uh, this is talking about removing a, a, I'm not sure if I'm going to write, program placement. That, uh, would require facility space, requires, uh, students going from their home school to this other location for five months. So I'm going to guess that the teacher allocations would not change because they would have, they would know they would go back. So we wouldn't change our staffing levels. But it will, it may potentially free up a classroom here or there in the different places. And it doesn't say exactly where, I'm not familiar with where the ELDCs are held now. The transportation is going to change and that those children no longer needed to be transported, so that's a, a dollar amount. So there are some, uh, changes to areas of the budget that if it comes up to zero, great. You say it's coming up to zero, but I, I'm suggesting that perhaps a chart that said, you know, uh, moving EAs here to there or something. Because I'm thinking that, um, all of these changes may have been folded into the 1617 budget already. Therefore, it's, we're, it's coming to us in the staff numbers, in the places that they're already thinking of moving. But we don't necessarily see, um, the actual effects. Because it's just sort of been all moved around inside the certain envelope. And so perhaps for information or decision, I guess for information, but perhaps the net zero could have been explained, um, slightly differently. Just so we could see how that is actually happening.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I have a, a question or, or a comment at this point, but, uh, I also, I would have liked to have seen, I think, more, more opportunity for CAC to give direct, uh, input on this item and, and probably at an earlier stage than, um, than it, it did. Uh, and, and I think as we, we, uh, talk about the processes that we're talking about tonight, uh, hopefully that, that will be, um, be a, a going forward, uh, step. And also, uh, a question I have is about the, the community piece. And, and where I'm coming from, I think with this is there are certain, uh, programs, uh, that, that we do a lot of consultation on if we're going to make any changes to them. Uh, and then there, there are some such, such as this one that, that we might not do, do any. So I guess my, my question is, was there some community consultation done on this piece? And is that something that we should be thinking about moving forward?
Director Miller?
I'll help out here and jump in Superintendent Zonifeld. I, I would think in this particular case, community consultation would not, um, be, be appropriate. It's about where we're putting special education programs for students. Consultation with CAC absolutely appropriate. But I think beyond that, um, those could be, I'm not sure how those consultations would even look. Uh, around a community consultation around where we're placing a, a, a self-contained or a Spec Ed program. And to what end? What purpose would it serve to have those kinds of conversations with the community? So I don't know if Mark has anything to add to that, but, uh, we, we haven't considered that and for the reasons that I'm saying, but.
Follow-up?
Thanks. Uh, I, I think, um, when I talk about community consultation, I'm not talking about it going out, uh, to everyone. But when something comes through the budget, um, there's a, there's a public process for, for the budget. And with a change coming that doesn't necessarily have budgetary impacts. I think what, what I would like to see, what we're seeing now coming through CAC is some of, um, I would call them almost testimonials in, in support of something like the, the, the learning centers. And, and even just to hear back, the, the feedback from, uh, those parents who had students go through this program that is now being ended. Um, or, or transitioned in, into another one. I, I would have liked to, to have heard a, a little bit more on that side or, um, just more view from different perspectives.
Through you Chair, Mr. Vice Chair Graves. I, I guess Mark can take that back and look at it, but that would be, that also would be a challenge because the consultation would occur perhaps with some of those parents for those children that have gone through those programs. But do we then consult with those parents around their children that are going into the self-contained programs? Maybe never having any kind of experience with them. I would be concerned that if, if Superintendent Zonifeld presented something about a program here and it's a, a zero-sum game and he, he came in and presented a, um, you know, from these programs, we've got these testimonials from parents. And the testimonials are all very positive. Those parents of those students that are going to the self-contained, who have never been in the self-contained, would not have a similar opportunity. And so a decision may be based on, on a skewed kind of, uh, testimonial. Because we'd, we'd only hear essentially the one side. I mean, we can certainly go back and talk about what that might look like. I, I, I don't think we're opposed to it. In, in, in my head right now, I'm, I'm perplexed on how that would look and, and the implications of that, but.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mark, uh, trustee, or trustee, Superintendent Zonifeld.
Thank you. Many hats. Through the Chair, the, maybe further on Director Miller's comments, even if we, sorry, I keep doing that. Even if we talked with parents of students who had been through the communication class. So you, you're sort of hearing the, you know, you're hearing them come out of both programs. Very similar to some of the, the comments that you're receiving about the, the, uh, learning center. I, uh, believe firmly that we would, will receive very positive comments about all of our programs. And so I'm not sure if that's necessarily the measure by which we can make it's, if it's what we should be using, uh, to make our decisions. Because we would have those about every single one of our programs, which we should. So the, uh, considerations made by staff in this case have been about how to continue to serve the needs of students, uh, in alternative ways. And that's where we've looked at, uh, how to support students that may have been in, in an ELDC program in their home school and what that would look like in terms of that, uh, support delivery. And, uh, from both a teacher and the speech-language pathologist back in the home school. That's the, what we've looked at, um, as, as opposed to the communication class.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Um, through the Chair, I'd just like to echo, um, Vice Chair trustee, uh, Graves, pardon me, um, comments, um, as I share them. Uh, one of the things that I grapple with as I do sit on CAC is in making decisions that affect our, our students with special needs. Um, is that when making decision, one of the, we want to look at, obviously, uh, for me, are we causing undue hardship to any changes that we're implementing? While I think we need to be open to change and change is good, uh, and I look at it positively. When making that decision here at this table, I need to ensure that for me to feel confident about making that decision, I look at the, uh, what, what, uh, the, you know, what evidence, um, is provided. Certainly, the other part of it is the, the, the voice of CAC. And, uh, certainly as a group, we, last night, at last night's meeting, we had an opportunity to hear, uh, some of the perspectives around the table. And those are so valuable. What happens is only some of us hear them. What happens is only some of us hear them that attend CAC. So when we do have recommendations, you know, I feel very uncomfortable making this decision until I hear the CAC recommendation. I know that those are coming forward for the spec ed plan. And I just feel that a collaborative approach to solving our dilemmas with serving our students in a very transparent way, we need to engage our experts who sit at the other table, the CAC table.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. I think in the absence of process and outcome evaluation, it is difficult for us to say which programs are truly impactful, successful, and well-resourced. And so I do think that evaluation, breadth, practice guidelines, expert opinion is what we require when we look at any kind of changes or restructuring to special education and to also help to inform us as we make our decisions on changes and budgets.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope. Another kick of the can. The, I recall somewhere in the email communication between CAC and Superintendent Zonfeld, a more descriptive explanation of why the support in the classroom was as effective and/or would be more comparable and less transition, et cetera, for the ELDC. So my first question would be perhaps, why wasn't that incorporated in this report? And perhaps you could elaborate for the benefit of everybody. But my second question is if we are discontinuing three early language development centers and we're creating three communications program classes, one might suspect that the number of staff you had in the three would transfer to the three new communications classes. But then where is the money coming from for the extra speech-language pathology support in the classroom for those kindergarten students that require it? Having spent quite a lot of time in full-day kindergarten, seeing the different variety of children who come in with different levels, I understand how that can work, can be effective. And a lot of them are coming out of childcare centers, et cetera, so they have different levels than they may have had in the past when this was designed. But again, I'm having trouble with the math because if we are moving the same number of classrooms to do the same number of things, but still expecting the children who otherwise would have gone to A but would never have qualified for B, there's more staff support required for those children left in the kindergarten classes. So perhaps you could elaborate.
I appreciate your questions and maybe I can help with the understanding. So the, sorry, through the chair, so the, keeping in mind that students, as we congregate students, that enables us to do different things in terms of service delivery. So if, for example, you have eight students all in separate classes across the system and the, what individual support looks like across those eight classes compared to when you bring those eight students together, that's a more resource-efficient model when you bring them all together. You don't need the same level of support that you provided in those individual settings. So you have almost a switch here that's happening, right, where we have, if you want to say, a resource-efficient, more resource-efficient model in the ELDC, and now these students going into the regular classes, and vice versa happening with communication. So that helps you in terms of, through the scheduling of our SLP staff, what that looks like. And to go a little further with that, the communication needs of our students going into communication classes are much more demanding, extreme if you like, and therefore easier to serve in that congregated setting. The ELDC, we can serve more easily, and I'm a firm believer that ideally, we would serve every student in a regular class in their home school. If, that would be the ideal, when we know that we have limitations in terms of resources and other things that we don't, you know, we move away from that when we have to. So the more we can get students back into their, staying with their peers in their home communities, in their neighborhoods, and serving them in those settings, the better. And the ELDC model is a halftime model, right, where the students are going back and forth between the ELDC and kindergarten, and certainly benefits in that congregated model, but there's a lot of transition and disruption for those students as well. It's a leftover, if that's the right term, structure from when we had alternate-day kindergarten, right? And so we continued with that model of alternate day, basically to serve more students. But in the end, once full-day kindergarten was fully implemented and we looked at this, we thought, really, these students are now attending school full-time every day in that one setting in their home school, better to serve them in that same setting and not have them continue to transition.
So to follow up, if I may, perhaps that could have been in the report. And again, to follow up on what Trustee Reynolds said, information that is shared at CAC that explains the changes when you're consulting and giving them the information and getting their feedback, needs to be duplicated into the public board package in our report when we get it because having had a bit of background information offline, so to speak, and listening to your explanation and also understanding the difference between the early years centers and all the supports that are now coming to students before they come to our system, none of that is captured in this report and it would make it much more easy to understand. And in this case, you know, it looks like the children will still be served, we're serving more. It doesn't say how many we're giving up in the ELDC, but it does say how many we're giving in the communications. So again, we're missing another piece as far as keeping up that net-zero kind of number. So thank you for your answer. Director Miller?
Actually, I don't want to comment on Trustee Harvey Hope's. I want to comment on Trustee Oliver's comment, what was really a question, more a statement. I think you're absolutely right, Trustee Oliver, and it's something that we need to get better at, is developing data and those kinds of things to determine and evaluate the success or unsuccessful programs. It's not always easy in education to do that because things come pretty rapid fire and often a ministry will drop something down on us and it's to be implemented in a few months. And the ability to assess or evaluate is virtually lost. But it's my intention that when we sit down as a senior team to talk about how we can start doing those things more efficiently and more better, so that we can provide data and evidence for ourselves in some of our decisions and then provide that for trustees as well. So as I said, you know, there is a big caveat with it because it's, education is not a perfect science or an applied science, it's a social science. And so sometimes those are not given to the same kind of evaluative techniques, but certainly we can do better at that. And it's our intention to start trying to do better with some of those, given all the other parameters that we're facing, as I'm sure trustees are aware of, the way things come rapid-fire to us and changes happen and so on, that we didn't expect last week, but we found out this week kind of thing. Okay?
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers on this topic tonight, thank you very much for your report, Superintendent Zonfeld. So our next item is the administrative procedure update. Director Miller, report 16074 on page 34 of your board package. Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Amos. I'm doing a lot of talking this evening.
That's not unusual.
On your admin procedure review update, a couple of things of note. The absence reporting, we have rescinded that, but that's because it's now included in the attendance management, which trustees will have a presentation in private session about. The code of ethics is new, as you know, and the rest are just date changes, so.
Comments or questions? Trustee Harvey Hope. Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the director. The, it says all admin procedures have had date changes with assigned guidelines having additional minor changes. It's funny this would show up here because I was, are we not on the administrative? No, the, I am reading something in the public package underneath the administrative procedure update, page 34 of the package. Maybe it's a typo in that it wasn't updated this round? Is that because that one hasn't been updated yet? Okay. Gotcha. Well, I will go back and look at the new sign guidelines, but my comment was, as I was driving by a couple of schools, we don't have consistency. And so maybe on a future date, one could figure out how we're going to get from where we are now to where we're going to be. And it should be actually in the public realm because that way, school councils, when they're trying to talk about paying for, helping pay for updating signs, they'd understand what the rules are and that the little logo needs to be there.
Can I comment?
Go ahead.
Through Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. Very, it's important what you've said and it's timely as well, as we're doing multi-year plan. And one of the things that we're talking about is marketing and promoting the board, et cetera. So it is significant what you're talking about. And we apologize that we kind of screwed that up. I, Dale mixed it up and then I'm supposed to read it over.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no further questions on this tonight, we will move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Collard.
Yes, CAC met last evening. We had a long and productive meeting, a lot of discussion around the spec ed plan and how to get that approved prior to trustees seeing the budget. And there's going to be a special vote done via email, which will then later be redone publicly. But the vote via email will be done so that the plan can be voted on prior to coming to, so that it can come to trustees prior to us voting on the budget. There was also a lot of discussion about the potential for the review, and as you know, there's a motion coming forward on that.
Thank you. Trustee Gribens.
The fundraising policy subcommittee met yesterday afternoon, and we are trudging forward. We are still in a stage by which we're, you know, trying to understand what our policy should entail. We feel that we have an administrative procedure that was put in place in absence of a policy and some of the items within the procedure are probably going to be elevated to the policy level. But we're also looking at perhaps including some other things that were just not thought of at the time, so.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Our last committee of the whole, we discussed budgets and also the code of ethics policy that we see in the package this evening. Our next committee of the whole meeting will include budget and also preliminary discussion on program viability.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to the director's report.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I only have a couple of items. The first one is, and Vice Chair Graves just actually mentioned it about the program viability committee, is if trustees don't have enough challenges on the plate at the moment. Associate Director Bog, I believe, is providing you all with, or I don't believe, but he has provided you with a binder of some data and some research. And Associate Director Bog will take us through a presentation at the committee of the whole next week on the program viability and the many challenges with that. So for public purposes, we felt the committee of the whole was an appropriate venue to bring that in because it's a more informal dialogue and more questions to be answered. The final recommendation will not be presented at that time because we're still working on that and we want to hear what the committee of the whole, what the trustees have to say. So, but Associate Director Bog, I don't, Dave, do you want to add anything? Okay, he will be presenting some options. The second item, and I know many of you have, may or may not have seen it, but it is good news. There was an announcement yesterday from the ministry, and I'm going to, I think it's important that we talk about the good news and the achievement of our students. So I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Hunt Dibbons.
Thank you, Director Miller. It is very exciting news. The graduation rates were released, and we all know that the province has had a push on, if you think that only in 2004, only 68% of students were completing high school within a five-year timeframe. And the province set out and set 2015 for a goal of 85%, which of course, we met. Well, our results are out now, and if you look on the website, you will see it posted at both 89% and 88%. So I'm going with the higher percentage for Halton. Either way, we are above the province and very, very proud of the success rate within this district and of all of our students. And I think it's a testament to all of the programs and the supports and the culture of caring that is created in this board. So very happy to share.
That's awesome news. That means we exceeded what we had wanted as well. And I believe that we're the second highest in the province for the public school board, so that's quite the achievement. So congratulations to everyone because everyone has a hand in helping those students succeed. So you finished your report? Thank you. Okay, I have a bunch of items. The first one is, this is Education Week, and I would like to thank everyone who is involved in education for everything that you do to help our students succeed because I think it's, every person in this system contributes in a way that helps the students. So thank you very much. It's also Mental Health Week, and I think we all need to take a deep breath and just remind ourselves that we need to focus on us as well as all the other issues that are going on around us because there's a lot going on and things seem to be moving faster and faster and it's hard to keep up. So we need to make sure that we focus on us. The, another thing is the Human Library. I came today to the Human Library, and if you haven't had a chance to go, it is amazing. I got to speak to Jerry Hull, who is a former White Oaks grad, actually, who has been in This Hour's 22 Minutes and on Second City, and she shared some of her life story and some of the other things, and very down-to-earth, really nice lady and really enjoyed my time speaking with her. And I also spoke to a young man who's about 10 hours away from his commercial pilot license at 23 after graduating from Brock with a business degree, and very passionate, and he'll make a great motivational speaker, which is something he's interested in as a sideline to kids, to help them find their paths. And I mean, and I know there was, there was a paranormal researcher there. He apparently was triple-booked all day, and there was a Falk, Pel? Thank you, Peregrine Falcon.
It could talk?
It did. And apparently there were dead rats involved too, so. But anyways. And anyways, there was a really broad-based number of people that you could have met with and... with, and they all had a wonderful story. So I would encourage you to go next year. I don't know what their theme is, but every year it's something different. We already mentioned the Student Conference next week at Sheridan, which is on Thursday, nine to about three. Next Thursday also is River Oaks' twenty-fifth anniversary, and everyone's welcome to attend. And White Oaks', White Oaks' fiftieth anniversary is next Friday and Saturday with a gala event, which is going to have an inaugural Wall of Fame. And there's going to be quite a few people who will be inducted into that, including Jerry Hall and Chris Hadfield and a few others like that. I also want you to put on your calendars, May thirty-first is the Eddies, which is a showcase and awards evening for our film students. And there are some amazing films, and it's an event worth going to, and it's held at the Burlington Arts Center. Is that, is that what it's called now? They changed their name, I know, Performing Arts, but it's a great evening. And I don't, I don't know what the time is, but I will send it out, seven p.m.? Oh, I've got that. And tomorrow night is our Student of Excellence. And so I know many of us will be going, and it is a great evening to recognize many of some of the wonderful students that we have in our system, and a cap off to a great Education Week. So look forward to that, and I believe that's it at the moment. So now we're up to trustee questions and comments. Vice Chair Graves.
This is opening week celebrations at Boyne Public School. So student, staff, parents in the community around Boyne are celebrating literally all week. They've had an event almost every day. This evening, those groups came together to put on a fabulous spring concert and a school open house. For many parents, this is the first opportunity they've had to see the inside of the school, and the students were leading their parents around to, to show them all the ins and outs. And they had some excellent things going on, including a giant cake, one full cake for each letter in the word Boyne, which was still wrapped when I left, which was great because the students were very, very interested in this cake as the, the spring concert was going on. So I just wanted to congratulate everyone involved, including the parent council, who did a lot of work for this evening, and everyone's doing a fabulous job there.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
I just wanted to echo your comments about the Human Library because I was also here today, speaking with a gentleman who was, makes his career as a voice actor, and, and watching him work with the youth that came out to talk to him as well. It was just a phenomenal experience, and I really think Lynn Wyszynski and her whole crew that was there today should be commended because this is something exceptional that's being done at the Halton School Board, and I applaud them for it.
And I echo your comments. It was an exceptional day.
Trustee Grabetz.
Okay. Well, I attended last week, for four days, the Canada Connect 2016 Conference in Niagara Falls. Trustee Pappan and trustee Collard also attended, as well as around nine board staff. The four-day conference was filled with a number of different sessions ranging from one to three hours, as well as exhibitors and excellent keynote speakers, including Colonel Chris Hadfield. I attended a number of sessions, including a hands-on session, a hands-on session about how to incorporate coding and robotics, this is a robot in here, into math classes at the primary through intermediate level in ways that support the current curriculum. These include using free coding tools like Scratch and Scratch Junior to program the drawing of geometric shapes, or programming robots to move to form shapes on the ground. It was fun and engaging, and students can also incorporate coding into storytelling, visual and performance arts, and other creative curriculum elements. I tested this with my own son, who is in grade one. He created a story and illustrated and animated it by coding with the Scratch Junior application, and it included adding sequential and looping control structures, which are things that I teach at the university level. He was also, he was very engaged in what he was doing. I also attended an excellent session on how the Toronto District School Board structures its digital lead learners and their DLL structure and expectations, including providing the expectation to provide workshops and participate in a digital marketplace at their board. And their whole structure on how they run their digital lead learner program is available on the TDSB website. And finally, I attended a three-hour session on Friday in Integrative Decision Making, put on by the Rotman School of Management from the University of Toronto. It was very valuable, and I believe that the Board of Trustees and senior administration could benefit from this kind of training, considering the high-impact decisions that we have coming up in the near future. Overall, the conference was excellent, and I would encourage everybody at any level to attend this conference next year.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Just two updates. As the ex-official member of the Board of Directors on the Centre for Skills Development and Training, there was an announcement today, welcome to the new CAO, Lisa Rosado. We're thrilled. Lisa actually was the interim CAO, and previous to that was the manager of accounting and HR for about ten years. So the centre is very excited to have someone permanent in place, and as a member of the Board, I'm very happy to be working beside her. The other update is I held my first Circle of Schools meeting, wards one and two, in collaboration with Julia Broderich, who is our Ward One Public Health Nurse. And I'd like to thank Superintendent Strufin and Superintendent Blackwell for joining us in that evening. And we'll be looking forward to another one, perhaps next fall. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Pappan.
Thank you. I attended the Math Symposium on Saturday, April thirtieth. Superintendent Terry Blackwell was the keynote speaker, and her speech was titled "Kids Don't Know the Facts." It was very engaging and very informative, and there were a lot of interesting classroom setups with things that are going on in our math department. My other event was a shout-out to John Tuck Choir. The elementary choir performed the American and Canadian anthems at the Blue Jay Games, Blue Jay Game on April twenty-sixth. The elementary choir consisted of eighty-six students between grade two and six. In early January, the students would meet weekly to rehearse and prepare the anthems for the upcoming event. They worked on meeting the requirements of pitch, time, and spacing set by the Blue Jays' management. In early February, the choir recorded both anthems and sent in the audition tape to the Blue Jays' office. This taping required the students to meet after school when there were a few interruptions and interfering sounds. This process was actually conducted more than once to get the recording that was required at the time. It was very stressful, but the reward of being accepted to sing at a Blue Jay Game was a major accomplishment for everyone. Their performance last week was supported by over four hundred John Tuck family members and thirty-three thousand Blue Jay fans. This experience is certainly one that each John Tuck Choir member will remember forever. They are so thankful to have been part of this, of creating this memory for their students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. So a few things to report. Firstly, congratulations to the Morden Change Club. They had a live aid concert, and they raised over fifteen hundred dollars for the Creation of Hope Initiative, which is an orphanage in Kenya. So that's exciting. They'll be forwarding their funds there. Secondly, I wanted to show you my new fashion tee-shirt here, designed by the Students of Gladys Spheres. It's their anti-bullying initiative, Cool to Care, C to C. And on the back, it says bullying is not cool, it's cold. And their mascot is there. So I thought that was pretty, pretty awesome, student-designed and great message. Congratulations to two Wards One and Two teachers who have recently received awards. Firstly, to Deb Langwa, Supply Teacher of the Year, and Brianna Mills from Oakwood, who is LTO of the Year. So congratulations to both of them for their awesome work. Last night, we had our second and final Family of Schools meeting, and the vast majority of schools were represented. It's my personal belief that the process is as important as the product in terms of trust-building and collaboration. So we collaboratively planned our agenda, and the folks from the school were our special guests last night. So they talked about the initiatives that they were proud of, that they ran in their schools this year. And at the end of it, they collaborated on a PRO grant, grant ideas, and additionally, they're planning a collective philanthropy effort to take place next spring. So I thought that was really great. And lastly, the Director earlier commented that sometimes we have rapid fire, we're the recipients of rapid-fire initiatives. And so my question or comment is around the MOE new focus on math. And as I've learned in some recent development activities that I've been lucky enough to attend, is that STEM is better looked at as STEAM, and better yet, as STEAM, i.e. incorporating humanities and arts. So it's my hope that as we move forward with, we collectively in the province move forward with a push on math, that we, it's not at the expense of arts, and it's not at the expense of humanities. We heard a young woman from Nassau talk about how they're bringing in artists to help collaborate and solve some of the hardest problems. So as this rolls out, I'd really love to understand how it's going to go and how we're going to embrace the STEAM concept.
Yeah. Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee L. Harrison. I think you would have agreement around the outside on that, absolutely. But I'm going to turn to Superintendent Solmini and Hunt-Dibbons, see if they have any comments about that.
Certainly, we're learning more and more about the provincial math strategy, and as we've said before, much of what's in there, we already have in our Halton Plan. And part of the work that we're doing as a group of superintendents is collaborating, and we have a date set where we're going to sit with our system principals and talk about how all of our work overlaps, so that we are certainly making sure that we're looking at all of the things that our kids need to, need to learn, not at the expense of something else.
Superintendent Hunt-Dibbons?
Thank you. I would just add to that, that there will be more information forthcoming, but they're still in the process of rolling it out provincially. And in fact, we have meetings coming up in May that we will be in attending before we roll out further. But we would echo your sentiments, trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. As was mentioned earlier tonight, it is Education Week, and I think we all need to celebrate around the table here, the launch of the Inspire Awards in the Board. And so again, congratulations to trustee L. Harrison and all the others who worked on this. We're very, very pleased to see it up on the Board website and all the connecting pieces. And now it's a matter of promotion through the trustee voices and through the voices of the senior admins. So that's a great accomplishment. I want to say kudos to the volunteers and participants in yesterday's Life Matters Conference at Georgetown. Over forty-five workshops were held in different areas of the, the two school sites, involving seven hundred and fifty or more students from grades seven to grade twelve. It was a tremendous day with great activity, and I had a chance to talk to a few of the individuals who participated in the event, and they all reported it was a wonderful experience. And so again, kudos to the volunteers who put on that very worthwhile event. Monday night, Superintendent Padra Barrett and I had the pleasure of being at the Halton Hills Town Hall to participate in a, again, a Human Library experiment, if you would, or, or experience. Kudos to teacher Joanne Patterson Meek, who worked with the Recreation Department of Halton Hills, as well as Tanya Malakuti, the resident nurse in Acton, who again, all worked together to put this Human Library on. I know that afterwards, Mr. Padra Barrett and I had the chance to compare notes of the individuals that we met. We were both very, very impressed with the life stories that these young individuals had to share with us. Finally, I'd like to remind all trustees that May thirty to June third, on the topic of active transportation, is in fact Bike to School Week. And any kind of promotion you can make of that very worthwhile week-long of activities within our schools, and perhaps even your involvement at the school sites, and some of the special events connected to that, would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by all of the schools that have, are, have, and are in the actual realm of making their plans for their activities during that week. So again, that's May thirty to June third, Bike to School Week in Halton. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm very glad you mentioned the Inspire Awards because I purposely didn't because I thought trustee L. Harrison might. So I'm very happy that you did because I'm hoping the system will embrace it and, and send those nominations into us. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to trustee Gray for reminding us about the Bike to School Week. I did share the information shared by staff members, Suzanne Burwell, with the schools in my ward, and I know many of the trustees had done the same. So thanks for that. Because I was away at the last board meeting, I, I just wanted to provide you with an update on, on some of the things that I had done last month. In April, I attended the Children's Mental Health Symposium, as well as the Healthy Schools Conference, where I ran into a lot of my former public health colleagues. It was great to see. A lot of great learnings that I intend to bring forward to the upcoming Mental Health and inclusive, sorry, Equity and Inclusive Education Committees. Just a quick reflection on our meeting of the Central West OPSBA regional meeting that took place in April, and the, the tour of the residential school, which was in fact the very first to open in Canada and closed just in nineteen seventy-one, I believe it was. It's now called the Woodland Cultural Centre. Touring it certainly had a huge impact on my psyche. I was incredibly moved and moved by it and impacted. And so I'm so pleased that we did name one of our schools in Oakville, Oudunawi. And I'm very pleased that we're looking at incorporating the education about First Nations and the history into our curriculum. There was some learnings at the Healthy Schools Conference that kind of tied nicely into that as well, and so I'll be sharing that with our Equity and Inclusive Education Committee. I'm looking forward to attending the Student Excellence Awards. That was an excellent event, very, very inspiring and fun and a highlight of last year for me, I must say. And I'm looking forward to the Halton Food for Thought Gala as well. I don't know if you recall, I do volunteer as much as I can at one of the schools in the breakfast program, and I enjoy that greatly. And last but not least, shout-out to Captain R. Wilson Think Bowl team for winning the challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Miller.
I just want to comment, seem to be commenting on trustee Oliver's comments all the time. But I, I think it was a very proud moment for this Board when you chose the name Oudunawi for that school and, and all its traditions. But I don't want to lose sight, the previous Boards, we have Emily Carr and Pauline Johnson as well, which were also First Nations names. So I think there's a, a history of trustees in Halton recognizing our First Nations people. And this Board has taken a further step towards that, and I applaud them, but I don't want to lose sight of the, the history of previous Boards either.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to rise into private? Trustee Grabetz, seconded by trustee Gray. Next. You didn't enter it in.
Your last one's a good one.
Rise and Read, Kavene, is that what you called it? Okay. All those in favor. Oh, Amy didn't sign it. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful night.